Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, friends and neighbors. This is the city council. It is Monday, the nineteenth of July in the year 2021. We are here at the community center at Virgil. On. Oh, now it's on. Is it on now?
Yes.
Okay, wow, thank you. The light is on. The light, the light. And so I have three counselors here. Counselor Ork, Hook, and McDonald, staff, the assistant boss, and the boss. And probably the keeper of the gold and all that is on virtually. We can summon them up out of the ether. Let's start this evening finally with a flag salute. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sincere republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight? And this is on. Any declarations of ex parte contact, conflicts of interest, bias?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I guess I don't have to say Counselor Hook here anymore because I'm not on video Zoom. I will have some to declare during the public hearing. I don't have any for right this second.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Let's see. Next thing, appointments. I've got two. A reappointment to the library board for Diana Mall and a public arts commission appointment for Amy McKenzie Watts. And I believe Ms. Watts is here this evening. Thank you. Thank you for being here. I'd like to go ahead.
Diana's.
I'm sorry? Diana's? Oh, okay. I didn't realize. Thank you. Thank you for being here, Diana. I'd like to go ahead and appoint those, make those appointments with the concurrence of the council. So if someone would help out on that.
Mr. Mayor?
Here would be appreciative.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move that we approve both appointments.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
And a second. Thank you. And so just on a, I can, go ahead and, if you would, go ahead and poll the council on those, please, on that motion.
Sure.
Thank you.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ork?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks, for being willing to be part of these commissions and boards. It's how a lot of things get done. Let's see. Turn the page. Oh, public comment. All right, now. I don't need to read those letters until we get into the, into the public hearing. All right, so is there any, any public comment this evening? Did you receive anything?
No, we didn't receive anything, any requests for virtual or written.
Oh, I do have one.
And the one.
Judy, would you rather wait until we get into the public hearing? Okay, for a comment? All right, thank you. Okay. Let's see. Next would be the consent agenda. Everyone had a chance to see that. If we could get some action on that, that would move us along.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ben and I were not at the last meeting, or Counselor McDonald and I were not at the last meeting, so I'm not sure if we're able to approve that. What are your thoughts there?
Let's refer to that.
You know, I think you could, but I also understand why you would not want to. So I think it's okay to say at this time, there's nothing pressing on this that we need the minutes to be approved. So if you wanted to just defer to the next council meeting, when individuals who were here could, could vote on that, I think it's a good point. I think it's a good policy just to do so. I think if you really wanted to, I think we could legally, but also I had to understand the idea of just saying, we're going to wait till the next time we'll have staff put it on the next consent agenda.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we defer voting on the meeting minutes from the last meeting in June until our next meeting.
Okay. All right, a motion. Is there a second, please?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, thank you, Ben. A motion and a second to defer the approval of the consent agenda from June 21st of this year to the next meeting in August. Okay? Doesn't need discussion. Hold the group again, please.
Sure. Counselor Ork?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. Now we can go to, we've got a public hearing for Republic Services. And, and... I have to do this kind of piecemeal, but there's some things here first. Purpose of this hearing is to receive public input from, input from community members on the services community members receive or would like to receive from the city's solid waste franchisee, Republic Services. And so, first thing would be, Mr. Temple, a staff introduction, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council and members of the community who are watching or here in person. Tonight for you is a public hearing addressing the franchise agreement with Republic Services. This started in April 19th of this year when Republic Services came and gave a presentation. During their presentation, asked for consideration of a rate increase. Council asked for more information, and on May 17th, we came forward with information on the solid waste agreement, and the background of that information was available during that meeting. At that time, the council asked for a public hearing. They asked additional questions, some of which we anticipate will be covered during this hearing. And so tonight, we're, we are meeting that public hearing obligation, and we will go through the process. So I will step away and let this go on, but be happy to answer questions as we continue on through this process.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything from, from Republic Services?
Yes, they should be popping on here right now.
Oh, okay. On the big screen.
Hi. Can everyone see me and hear me?
This is the two of you.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks, Alyssa. So, tonight Will and I will be presenting, and Travis Comfort will be controlling the slides, so if you want to go ahead and give Travis permission to pull up the presentation, that would be, and share his screen, that'd be terrific.
He should have that power now.
Yes.
Great. Can everyone see that? Did that come up for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Alyssa. Like I said before, thanks for keeping us on task. Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, well, I'm KJ Lewis. Again, I'm your municipal relationship manager, and presenting with me tonight is Will Mathias, your finance manager. Jason Jordan was going to join us tonight, but he was, he was called to help another business unit in Colorado, and has to get up at 3:00 AM tomorrow to launch the trucks. So he's going to bed very early tonight. We last appeared before council on April 19th of this year to request a rate adjustment. Before that, we appeared before your council in 2016. As I mentioned in April, it is our hope that we be put on the agenda annually to provide updates about our industry, about legislation that potentially impacts your community, and with an annual report on services received by your constituents. Council reconvened on May 17th with a staff report. At this meeting, although we were not permitted to speak or answer questions, we did note that council raised several points which we would like to address now, tonight. After the May 17th meeting, we met with your staff and requested that any additional questions that council may have be sent to us so that we could prepare for tonight's meeting. But staff did not have additional information to share at that time. Staff emailed us on June 11th and again reiterated that outside of questions raised at the May meeting, they were unaware of any additional concerns until today, when they passed on an email from Counselor Ork. We hope to be able to address the questions raised at the May meeting and in Counselor Ork's email tonight. We do feel that annual placement on the agenda will help both council and Republic Services develop a deeper relationship and allow us both to understand any concerns on both sides. Tonight, we'll be asking council to direct staff to ensure that we provide council with an annual update and presentation and the rate adjustment we asked for previously to level set your city within the target range. Travis, can you go to slide two? Thanks. This slide serves as a reminder of the revised statute that established cities' authorities to internate franchise agreements with, in just solid waste franchise agreements and of our franchise terms with the City of Stateon. As a quick reminder, Republic Services paid $92,000 in franchise fees to the City of Stateon in 2020, last year, during, during that very strange year. Next slide, please, Travis. In this slide, we seek to address Counselor Patty's concerns about residents being able to swap cart sizes. We would like to present some affordable and easy options for your constituents. Here's a comparison chart amongst surrounding cities and their services. As you can see, cities where both yard debris and organic food waste are collected have service every week and have 65-gallon carts. In cities where only yard debris is collected, residents receive service every other week and have larger carts. However, the cities who receive every week service have more total cart volume overall. Adding organic waste to carts increases weight substantially. A 95-gallon cart of both yard debris and organics is simply too heavy for our trucks to pick up, and of course, we wouldn't want to leave a cart full of organics out for two weeks awaiting pickup. We hear Counselor Patty's question about if customers could have a different cart size than their neighbor should they request it. I caution that there's a cost to doing this, and there are more affordable options. And if we were to change every resident's cart to a 95-gallon, there would be substantial costs to the rate pair to replace the equipment, for labor, and for windshield time. We'd have to amortize that over all residents, and we would also have to remove the organics program and let residents know that they may no longer compost their organic waste. There are more affordable and easier options which require less consumer education. One is we can provide an extra yard debris just at request, and we can do that right now, for any resident for a low cost of $6.30 a month. The really great thing about this option is that people can choose it seasonally, like only when they have that extra amount of yard clippings and garden cleanup, or whatever. I would imagine they might need it more in the summertime than in the wintertime. So they can, they have choice there. Number two, we can work with the city to establish an additional annual leaf cleanup day, maybe in the spring when people are, you know, sort of cleaning up their garden for, in preparation for summer. So those are two ideas that would be a lot more affordable for your residents. I'm going to pass it over to Will to talk about the next slide, and then I'll be back at the end. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So I just wanted to talk about, first of all, just some different methodologies of rate setting that different cities use. And they're kind of bucketed here, but the primary methodologies are, first of all, the methodology that we use with the City of State, which is we come in when there's a need around side of the 8%, 12% range, and make a request. And then the council looks at the details of that request. Other methodologies are tied to an index oftentimes. So there is a blended CPI methodology where maybe part of the increase is tied to CPI or a water sewer trash index or something like that. Part of it is tied to what the actual increase is at the burner, and maybe part of it is tied to the Energy Information Association Fuel Index.
Will, just to interrupt on, on words. CPI stands for Consumer Price Index.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Sure, yeah. That's okay.
So some cities elect to use kind of a blended version of that, recognizing that costs do go up, but, you know, the burner doesn't go up very often, maybe once every few years, so they kind of break it up that way. Some jurisdictions will use a cost of service analysis where that's a pretty intensive process that really get into all the cost of servicing the container and then build a rate off of that. In a sense, that's what we do when we come in and make a request of the city anyway. We do that on our, on our end. Other jurisdictions, jurisdictions will use something like a sliding scale. And that looks something like, you know, if the hauler, if the profitability is below the 8%, well, they, they may get 125% of CPI. Or if the hauler is at like 8%, they may get 100% of CPI. Or if the hauler is at 10%, they may get 75% of CPI. Or, or zero if the hauler is at 12. Or so something like that, where the percentage of CPI is based on where the profitability currently sits. But most methodologies do revolve in the state of Oregon, do revolve around an 8% to 12% rate, rate of return with a 10% target. And you may ask, why 10%? Well, you know, and that is an important question. But what's important to know is that the shareholders of any company in the waste industry here in Oregon, they don't actually receive 10% if that's what the return is. Out of the 10%, they still have to purchase equipment, which is pretty expensive. Trucks are $350,000. I mean, to put that into, into perspective, we made just over $200,000 in state last year, so, you know, that, that wouldn't even pay for a full truck. So trucks are very expensive, containers with the increasing price of steel are very expensive. And then haulers also have to maintain cash reserves to, to do day to day operations in business. So there's a lot of cash, from a cash perspective, there's a lot of cash tied into those two things. And so usually, on a 10% return, a hauler may actually net about half of that. Go ahead and take it to the next slide, please, Travis. So with the next two slides, I just want to talk a little bit about a concern that Counselor Hook had brought up, and that was about the inconsistency of rate adjustments with different cities. And I just want to show that if you look at the rate adjustments that have occurred over the same time period that it's been since our last rate adjustment with the City of Stateon, they actually are fairly consistent. But you have to look at the cumulative rate adjustments to see that. And so, when you compare the cumulative rate adjustments, as you'll see here, the rate adjustments range in these cities anywhere between 12.2% and 15.9%. And compare that with the request that we have made in the City of State of 10.3%. So the difference is that these other cities have, in that same timeframe, approved smaller adjustments in more frequent increments to build up to that rate, the higher rate adjustment percentage. And then not mentioned here, I'm sorry, go back one slide, Travis. Thanks. Not mentioned here is Twolleton, Omsville, both of those were brought up as well. Twolleton also goes by the industry standard of 8% to 12% with the target of 10. We appear before the council there annually. In 2018, they passed a 6.5% rate adjustment with the recycled surcharge. In 2020, a 3.1% rate adjustment, and this year, a 4.6% rate adjustment. Now, the 4.6 this year had a lot to do with the disposal tippy increased by Metro up in that northern market. But total, those adjustments are 14.2% plus the recycled surcharge. So, you know, again, kind of in line with what the request has been here in Stateon. And then Omsville, much, much like Stateon, a similar situation. We, we hadn't done a rate adjustment there since 2016, and in 2020, we came into council with a request for 15.6%. And they granted that request effective September 1st, 2020. This year, we were, we were fine with our target. We did still go in and just let them know where we stood financially, but we feel like that's important, just to say, hey, here's where we thought we would be with that rate adjustment, here's where we are. You know, just to make sure that we are keeping the council informed. Go ahead and move it forward, Travis. Right? Slide six, in a lot of ways, it shows the same thing as the prior slide, but it just kind of reframes it a different way. So here's what those rate adjustments look like since 2016, if you look at what the annual impact of them is, and you can see that those will range anywhere from 2.1% to 3.5%. Now, Stateon, again, if you look at the 10.3, you divide it back over the last six years, it's 1.7 by comparison to those others. Go ahead and move it forward, please, Travis. All right. All right, and lastly, I just want to talk real quick, another city that had been brought up was Grants Pass, which was a little bit different of a case. And in Grants Pass, they did not previously use a blended CPI model, but recently, because they had a large kind of catch-up increase to get back to the target profitability, they did the level set or the catch-up increase, and it was 15%. It was a, it was a big increase. And then they also voted to tie annual adjustments going forward to water sewer trash index. And that would provide incremental adjustments and kind of avoid the big hit of a 15%. Even though, you know, in a way, it works out the same way if you, you know, if you had kind of done it over the course of time. But they preferred at that point to tie it to an index. It just provided more stability and predictability, and rate pairs did get hit with a large, a large hit, one shot after that level set. So that's the reason they elected to do that.
And you know, Will, is it correct that it was so high at 15%? Because Grants Pass, they hadn't done a rate adjustment in so long, but they needed to get back to the 10% target within that range of 8% to 12%?
That's right. That's what the level set adjustment was, was to get back to the target range. And so they had been behind on increases, and as such, they did the one large increase to catch up to the 10%, but then elected to go with, to tie it to an index going forward so that, just so the increases were a little bit more predictable, and they knew what they would be, and it wasn't as much of a shock to the rate pairs. And so that is, that's certainly something that we are willing to discuss with the city or any of the other models that I mentioned previously, if there's interest in something like that over the way we currently do it. Anyway, before I pass it back over to KJ, I understand rate adjustments are difficult, and it's, it's a tough time. It was a tough year last year, and we definitely are sensitive to that. We've, we've also been here through the fires, through ice storms, through COVID, and taking care of our customers. That's important to us. And I personally find a lot of value in the garbage bill. I mean, when I look at the bills I pay, water bills, 150 bucks a month, trash is like 30, you know, and then gas is 115, electrical is 125. So, you know, none of those other services, I'm biased because I'm in the waste industry, but none of them are sending a $350,000 piece of equipment by my house twice a week, either in rain or shine, or, you know, ice storm, or fire or anything. And so I just think there's a tremendous amount of value in the garbage bill. With that, I will pass it over to KJ.
Thanks so much, Will. Okay, on this, this last slide, simply a reminder of what the proposed adjustment would cost for different customers. I'd also like to address Counselor Ork's concern, and if I may, I'm going to share, and for the benefit of the rest of council, Counselor Ork asked, is the corporate sales tax being passed along to the consumers through this increase, were they in favor of the corporate sales tax that was passed in 2019 and implemented in 2020? What, if anything, did Republic Services do to advocate for its customers against the corporate sales tax if they were not in favor of it? If they were in favor of it, how are they absorbing this tax and not passing it along to consumers like promised? I believe that Counselor Ork is referring to the corporate activities tax, or CAT, as we call it, which is a tax on revenue, not on income, and nearly all businesses are required to pay it. The CAT, and it was passed legislatively. The CAT is applied to taxable commercial activity in excess of $1 million and is assessed at $250 plus 0.57% of all taxable commercial activity. This tax is directed into a fund for student success, a fund for student success, which is totally distinct from the general fund and dedicated solely towards education in the state, in the state of Oregon. This tax is also considered a pass-through by other jurisdictions such as Clackamas County, Washington County, Marion County, when doing their annual COSAs or cost of service analysis. Let me be clear here. Republic Services advocated strongly against this tax, and specifically in two ways. Number one, through the chambers of whom we are members, and the State Chamber of Commerce. I can assure you, council, that many, many businesses oppose this tax and advocated against it. Number two, through our contract lobbyists in Salem who also advocated on behalf of your constituents. Unfortunately, our lobbying efforts were unsuccessful. You yourself are paying this tax if you bought any consumer goods since it was implemented. The only exceptions are groceries, nonprofits, federally exempt farmer co-ops, government entities such as the City of Stateon and school, and school districts, for example, hospitals and mobile home parks. One other notable exception is that car dealers do not have to pay this tax on cars, but only if they're sold to other resellers or car dealerships. They do pay it on cars sold to the public. This very issue supports our request to appear before you annually in order to inform you of any issues that we are advocating for or against at the legislative level, levels such as NFL 582, which just passed this past session, and I told you about in April. I also suggest that if you, as elected officials, are aware of any legislation that you feel would negatively impact your constituents, that you speak out on their behalf directly with your representative and senator, and any legislators that serve on the committee debating the bill. It's within every citizen's right to advocate at the legislative level, and as elected officials, you definitely bring a special resonance to the conversation when you speak. I'd like to get two notes on citizen written comment. We do make every effort to pick up at curbside on schedule. We ask that residents have their cans out by 6:00 AM on pickup day so they're ready when the truck comes through. In the event of a missed pickup, our customer service representatives are instructed to let our operations team, Josh's team, know so that they may rectify the missed pickup immediately. If our customer service agents are not providing the correct information or in any way not serving your residents in the manner where Public Services expects, I would hope that you or your staff would, as other cities do, reach out to me or Josh directly so that we may correct the behavior. Regarding providing public information about blue cart schedule or holidays, generally I work closely with county and city staff to distribute information via paper, social media, websites, or any other way the city prefers to communicate with its citizens. I would ask that I be directed to whoever on your staff handles public communications in order to do so. In some cities in Marion County, that's the city manager, and in other cities, it's a public works director, and in others, there's a dedicated communications person. I also remind council the slides that Will presented explaining the compounding nature of delaying rate adjustment. We're open for questions in a moment, but I'd like to be at rate or ask. We're asking you two things tonight. One, we're asking to be placed on the council agenda annually so that we may provide you with more timely updates. And number two, we're asking council to direct staff to draft a resolution approving a level set rate adjustment of 10.3%, which will return us back to the industry standard's target rate of return. We're happy to discuss moving towards a more predictable ask, as would moving towards a CPI, as other cities have done, with your staff if you direct them to do so. But right now, tonight, we're asking for a level set adjustment since we haven't had one since 2016. Thank you. Are there any questions?
This is a good time to ask questions?
Is this the appropriate time to ask questions, Alyssa?
Alyssa? This is a good time to ask?
We can do it now, or we can wait until we get through the public hearing, or we have a staff report also.
Yeah, we, we, okay, later, yeah, that's fine. All right.
Should I, should I turn off my camera for this part?
I, I think, yeah, and then we'll have you come back on when we get through the public hearing portion. when we get through the public hearing portion.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Keith, a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Briefly, on May 17th, we did an overview of the franchise agreement with Republic Services and talked about sort of the history and the background information with that. If, just as a reminder, Title IV of the State Municipal Code specifically talks about Chapter 4.08, specifically is a solid waste management agreement. We talked about some of the unique characteristics of this agreement in terms of the codification of it, but it's not unique, per se, for trash services. Same thing with some of the conditions of the way this franchise is set out. While it's unique compared to the other franchise agreements we have, it is not unique in terms of how it relates to how other municipalities do their solid waste rate adjustments. We also talked about the State Municipal Code talks specifically, State Municipal Code 4.08010 talks to the reasons why we provide a solid waste and the provisions of that. And that's what we talked about on May 17th. To reiterate on this one, there is laid out in State Municipal Code 4.08030, and this is part of your packet, talking about what considerations the council needs to look at when considering a rate increase. There are 10 items that are listed in there, the last of which is such other factors the council deems irrelevant. So there is a lot of leeway, but there are also nine other specific things that it discusses of what your considerations should be for this. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions or address anything, and I'll be available as we continue through this public hearing.
All right, thank you, Keith. And then, let's go ahead and I'll open the public hearing. And... Well, they're in here, I think. I think. Make sure that there were, yeah, there's time. There'll be, yeah, it's a lot of stuff here for some reason. Alyssa, did city staff receive any written testimony for the hearing?
We did. We received three, which you have in front of you and have been posted on the city's website, where we post agendas and packets.
I guess the council has, all council has copies of those?
Yes, and they were provided to Republic Services as well.
I'm going to read it to the record anyway.
Okay, yes.
If we go ahead with that. So here's the first one, from Levon Mascol, City of Stateon. Mascol?
Mr. Mayor, point of order. Are we supposed to read something about the public hearing and declare conflicts of interest and ex parte contacts and stuff?
He did read it at the beginning. It's, this is somewhat more like how we would do the budget hearings. So before we do that, would maybe now would be a time that you could do that. I know that you were.
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that I have had many conversations with different community members about this topic, as well as I have posted information about this public hearing on social media, just so that everyone's aware. And one of these public comments is from a family member of mine.
Okay, that's fine, thank you. Other, ready? Okay, I'm just following directions here. No free will. Okay, here's the first letter from Levon Mascol, City of Stateon. Says, "I live here in Stateon. I'm satisfied with the service and current cost. However, Republic is no longer providing information regarding the blue chart schedule or holiday changes. At least, they have not provided this in my neighborhood. I'm aware this is likely available online. However, until the internet and the hardware needed to access it becomes free of charge, companies should provide alternate means of communicating information." Thank you. And that's Levon Mascol, 985 Brody Court. Thank you. Next one is from Sharon Lee, City of Stateon. Says, "Republic Services are the worst. They fail to pick up at least once a month, but still charge for the full month. Have had to call them so many times, and they never make the drivers come back and get it or refund for it." Sharon Lee. Third letter from Marcy Crenshaw. Dear Mayor, Council members, and city staff, it's my understanding Republic Services has proposed a rate hike of approximately 10.3%. This is a terrible time in the lives of many of our citizens and businesses due to loss of income during the COVID-19 shutdown. And this could be a budget buster in many of these families. Yes, I understand Republic Services has costs, but they should be able to weather at least another year without the increase since they were not one of the businesses that had to close their doors or drastically reduce their hours. I also do not believe we necessarily need larger yard debris bins as a consolation prize for such an outrageous increase in fees. Sincerely, Marcy Crenshaw." Okay, those are the three letters that the council received from underwritten testimony. Did staff receive any request to virtually testify at the meeting?
No, we did not.
Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to provide testimony for this hearing? Yes. And Jody, would you come up to the table? Take part here. If you would, please, make sure the lights...
Judy?
Judy?
Can you turn your microphone on? Sorry, you just touched the button there, and it'll turn on. Then we can hear you.
I have to get used to that. Judy, tell us a name and an address, please.
My name's Judy Skinner. I live at 610 East Cedar in Stateon. And I've been a master recycler for 20 years. I was here in 2016 when the rate increase at that point was approved. And my one comment to that was that at that time, even though the yard debris was changed to mixed organics, the solid waste ordinance was never updated to reflect that. So the solid waste ordinance still says yard debris, even though Republic and the county and all know that we have mixed organics, except occasionally when they get a new driver. So I would very much like to see that updated. I would also like to encourage the details of the rates included in the resolution and posted online so that we can look up, you know? Somebody will ask, well, today, somebody said, "What does it cost for an extra recycling cart?" I couldn't find it. I finally found it in the new stuff that was presented in May. But to make it easier, it would just really help if that was included online. And my notes are on my phone, and occasionally, they decide to go away. I would, so she talked, the lady from Republic talked about having an extra organic cart seasonally. Well, that sounds lovely until you realize what the cost of delivery and removal is, and it's probably prohibitive, that you would want to, you would choose to keep it all year round if they're going to charge the regular delivery and removal like they do for the change of size of cans. There are many uncertainties in the market right now. Marion County just approved a new contract with Covanta with unknown impact on garbage rates. This seems like a very odd time for Republic to be asking for a rate increase. Although I suppose Stateon's a small place. We'll worry about the big ones with bigger problems, but this just seems like a very odd time. There's not a process of recording complaints. And so if they're going to do an annual report, they don't do a very good job of tracking complaints because oftentimes, when you call them up, you get Phoenix, or North Carolina, or somewhere else that doesn't have a clue. So I think maybe the city needs to consider having a place to at least log complaints so that annually, when they come in for review, that can happen. There is an app that's been developed by Mid Valley Garbage and Recycling Association, who's the haulers association. And it does tell you which weeks are which. It will deliver on whatever schedule you want the whatever you need to set out this week. And it includes holidays. I would like to see the annual report. Let's have a month and a date when it happens so that the public knows when to expect these things.
Thank you, Judy.
I didn't hear about this until a week ago.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Good point, yes.
Can I get a point of clarification from Judy?
Yeah, certainly.
So you mentioned the solid waste ordinance wasn't updated. What, how was this causing issues? You mentioned drivers, but I just, how was this?
I had complaints that I put garbage in my yard debris because there were napkins and food in it. But it's just a matter of good policy that if the ordinance says yard debris, and what they're picking up is organics that includes food, can we try and make it up to date? I mean, I...
Yeah. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else that's going to provide testimony this evening? I don't see anyone else here.
No.
According to my agenda here...
Did, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Did we want to have Republic come back if they had a response? Or did you want to hear from them again? I just wanted to check before we close the hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Does anyone have?
I'm going to have questions, yeah.
Republic, we got some? Let's get them, yeah, let's get them back up.
All right, we'll go ahead and have KJ, and Will pop back on, or whoever's going to answer.
Okay. Well, we can both be here. So, may I address Judy's customer service question? Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. So we do track customer complaints, no matter where they are received. And I just want to remind the council from our April presentation that we had last year fought only five residential complaints from the City of Stateon, representing 0.02% of your population. We had one commercial complaint, again, representing 0.02% of your, of those customers, and one industrial complaint representing 0.12% of those customers. So...
Just to clarify, that percentage is, the percentage of basically opportunities to have, to service the customer. So it's not, you know, when we calculate a percentage of customer complaints, we don't do the number of complaints divided by the number of customers. We do it, the number of complaints divided by the number of times we service the customer in that year, so...
The number of opportunities we would have to make a mistake or receive a complaint.
Correct.
Would one complaint a year be 1/48? 12 times 4, once a week times 4, was a month, times 12 is a year. So 48 possibilities. A complaint would be 1/48, right? Whatever that turns into. Is that right?
Actually, double that 48 number because we service twice. Two different service opportunities each week.
Okay, so 148, 96, okay. Okay, that's fine. Did you folks, I'm going to jump into this. This, Ms. Lee, Sharon Lee, her complaint, her complaints failed to pick up at least once a month. That sounds like a continuing situation. You folks addressed that one in particular?
We have addressed Ms. Lee's complaints, and we forgave over $100 towards her account at one point. And I don't have a record of her having a current account, but perhaps it is under somebody else's name that she lives with.
Of course, there's a possibility. If you don't get the can out, it doesn't get picked up. So there's...
Exactly.
There's probably enough fault to go around on someone.
We start pretty early in the morning, so unless you're a really early riser, it's kind of a good idea to put your can out the night before.
We have to be early risers because Gus wants to go out and meet the driver.
Right. Get his biscuit.
Get his biscuit. Okay, someone else, please. Questions for the Republic people?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've got questions. Thank you. So I am a little bit confused. Our first question that we had asked was how the rate increase compares to neighboring communities and like communities. I saw the chart that you guys had given us with some of the cities that were listed. I can't remember which ones were on there exactly. But were all of ours during those years, then zero? Because it would have been great to kind of see that. And then, are those all of the cities that you serve in the state that are of similar size and alike? Or did you, were those picked out specifically to draw a picture that you wanted us to see?
Those were the ones that were asked about in the meeting specifically, in our, the May 17th meeting, that were named specifically. So we used those in the chart that we showed you tonight because we thought that there was particular interest previously. And Will, you can jump in anytime. But we showed a comparison with cities that were closer to you, such as Silverton and Woodburn, which have similar size and similar service. But in the subsequent meeting, those particular more southern cities were asked about.
Yeah, and to your question, Council, please, Councilor Hook, zeros in all those years for Stateon. And we could take probably just about any other selection of cities, and it would support the same thing. If we did it, not the zeros, but that they have rate adjustments that, in my experience, typically, whether the rate adjustment was approved once every five years or approved annually, a lot of times, you can look back at that, and it generally kind of coincides with what an index would be. And so inevitably, you end up not at the exact same number because as you saw on that chart, there's a range. It's 12.2 to 15% or 15.5. But they're all generally pretty close over that same timeframe.
Mr. Mayor, I have a follow-up question on that same topic. So am I correct, then, that you guys don't serve Sublimity, Independence, Monmouth? Like, I think we threw out some of those cities as examples, and I was expecting a little bit more robust examples with a little bit more detail than just those percentages? Sort of how you guys came to that? Because I'm still confused as to why each of these cities has a rate increase for the last, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5 years on here annually? And yet, is it, am I correct in understanding that the last time that you guys asked for one was in 2016?
That's correct. That was the last time that we were put on the agenda in State, and it was before my time. I do know that when the recycling market crashed, as I'm sure you heard about, because it was all over the news, which was also before my time. My predecessor asked to appear before your council to discuss the changes in the recycling market. When I started in early 2019, I asked to appear before council too because we had not been able to appear or been put on the agenda to talk about what had happened to the recycling market in China and how the United States and other countries were coping with that collapse of that market. And then, of course, we've had additional pressures since then. But the earliest that we were able to appear on the agenda was this April. But the earliest that we were able to appear on the agenda was this April.
So I'm just, I'm confused a little bit. Did you guys specifically ask to come in and discuss rate increases in 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020, each of those years?
I can't speak to 2017, but I do know that my predecessor in 2018, when the recycling market collapsed, did ask, and then I asked in 2019 and 2020. And you may recall, in 2020, I was asked by staff instead to write a letter because of the extraordinary circumstances of COVID. So I sent a letter to council. And then we were, there was not a response. So we were able to appear in April of this year.
So you have record that you asked in 2017, 18, 19, 2020 to specifically talk about rate increases, not about China or anything like that, but rate increases?
What I can tell you is that I do not have a record. I personally was not, I began my job in 2019, so I don't have access to my predecessor's emails. I imagine that if she did email staff, it would be part of the public record in 2017 and 2018. I began in March 2019. I met personally with staff. Clearly, the market collapse had an impact on the industry. We went to other cities, discussed it, and made adjustments.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I need to, I'll hop in at this point. I'll be happy to look at the previous, the incident we're aware of was that they had asked to do a presentation during COVID, and what we had let them know is we weren't doing presentations at the time. So they wrote a letter when we discovered that what they were asking for wasn't just a presentation, it was a rate increase. That was something different, which would be qualified under our COVID restrictions, and that's why they were put on the April 19. We will be happy to go look back in the record to see, but I personally don't recall being asked in 18, 17, 18, or 19 to come talk about rates. But we, it would be a matter of public record, and we can look and see. But we do try to work when we know. The issue that they keep mentioning is in 2020, during the COVID time, they did ask, our council rules stated that we weren't doing presentations. That's what they said they wanted to do. Once we realized it was actually a rate increase ask, we put it on the agenda. So that's the history of that. I'll be happy to go back and look and see, and if there was some sort of oversight, I'll be happy to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith.
Thank you. I do have more questions, but if there's counselors that want to ask questions, I don't want to take all of it right now.
Go ahead, Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to acknowledge, thank you for supporting your consumers and not supporting the cat tax. I appreciate that. And I did advocate as a consumer and as a counselor against that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had a question, so I apologize. I wasn't at the April meeting, and I did go back and watch the meeting. I just wanted a little clarification. So what I'm seeing from the slides as well is that the acceptable profitability range is between 8 and 12%. And so you want to make sure that you're at, so the 10% will get you in the middle of that range? Is that what I'm understanding? And I believe, I just, I can't recall. I know that you talked about it, but can you just refresh us on if we don't, if we don't make this rate adjustment, then where does the profitability land in your range? And then where does it land if we do in subsequent years? If you could just remind us, please?
Will?
Yes. Pulling it up now. Sorry, I should have been prepared for this question. So with, with the rate adjustments, this would, this would keep us at 10% through the end of 2022. So that's what the 10.3% would do. And without, that would put us at a 4.8%. So we'd land outside of the range. And again, you know, 4.8%, that is the rate of return for cash reserves for day-to-day operating activities and buying trucks and things of that nature, so.
Does that get at your question, Counselor?
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor, point of clarification?
Go ahead.
So if we make this increase, then it will, it will, okay, so if we don't, then in 2020, the profitability will be at 4%-ish, you said, for 2021? Or is that for 2022?
For 2022. And then for 2021, and when we make these estimates, we don't, we didn't put in any huge inflationary cost. Inflation seems to be outpacing the estimates we made here. But in 2021, our rate of return based on the forecast estimates we made would be 8.3%. I'm sorry. Wrong line. 5.9%. 8.8% in 2020, 5.9% in 2021, 4.8% in 2022.
And without a rate adjustment, that would compound, like, there's a compounding nature to this, which is what happened in Grants Pass, where they hadn't had an adjustment for quite some time, and then just recently voted to do a 15% rate adjustment to get them back in that range of 8 to 12 with a target of 10, and then moving forward time to an index so that they could be like those other jurisdictions that every year, they know what to expect, because it's tied to an index that's published by the federal government, and they know what to expect. And I think, hopefully, that slide that was earlier clarified that point for you.
Thank you.
And what we're asking now is, what we're asking tonight, to be clear, is we're asking for a level set adjustment, and much like in Grants Pass, we're, you know, I just gave a presentation in Woodburn, I gave a presentation in Almsville. We didn't ask for anything, because Almsville did an adjustment last year. And they just, I just wanted to give them an update and tell them what was happening in the legislature. And they appreciated that. The city of Woodburn, I gave a presentation to council, and we did not ask for a rate adjustment, because we were in the 10, we were in the range. And then the mayor asked, the mayor of Woodburn asked me to come back to the Rotary and to present the same information to the Rotary. And he mentioned during that meeting that, you know, he appreciated the fact that, and he felt, you know, happy that we were honest with him, and we're like, you know, we don't need anything this year, but I want to tell you what we did during the fires, and I want to tell you what we did, what's happening in the legislature, and I want to tell you what our lobbyists are working on, and I want to tell you about what we see coming down, you know, the road with the discussion at the state level about the recycling system. So what we're asking for tonight is for a level set adjustment, and then to appear before you every year, so that this, you know, we can build our relationship and, you know, not have this kind of rather, I'm sure, what seems like a large ask. But we need to level set back into the target zone.
Okay. I feel like my last question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So what, have you run the numbers on what it looks like if, to get you back to the 8%? Because you're talking about 10. What does it look like if we approve an 8? Or how do, what if we prove something that gets you back to 8%, which is in the profitability range?
So at, to get to 8%. Give me a moment here, and I can tell you what that would be. So that increase would be about 6.5%.
Thank you.
Are you folks comfortable with off-the-wall questions? Okay. Here's-
Sure.
Just one. Just, can you think of a couple or three places where you've just walked away from the service? Because it just couldn't, couldn't find, let's say, that middle ground? Let's just not go there, kind of thing? Communities have been told to find another-
Wait, I would feel comfortable saying that we have had challenging conversations.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? I have some questions for clarification for Keith about our franchise agreement. Keith, do you recall if there's any mention of an acceptable profitability range in our franchise agreement? Of that 8 to 12%? Is that something that-
I don't recall. I'm sorry. I did look through that, but I don't recall when I reread this before tonight.
I couldn't find anything. And then what is our, like, legal obligation in our, in our franchise agreement for rate increases? Is that, is that within there, that we're supposed to do it a certain amount of times per year, every two years, or a percentage that we're supposed to meet?
Really, what the, what the, I mean, this was written back quite a few years ago, and we talked about the history of this, but, you know, we talked about State Mistake Code 4.08030, which is all that really is laid out in terms of, it says you have to, for any rate increases, the following guidelines need to be met, and should be set by a resolution of the council after a public hearing. The rate schedule should be included as part of the franchise agreement. And then it said the councils should consider the following in necessary. And that is part of the staff report, and it lists the 10 items that you should consider. So unfortunately, that's all of the guidance at this time it really provides in terms of, here's what you need to consider for that.
Okay. And are we responsible as counselors, or you guys as city staff, to bring this up, these rate increases? Is there any obligation for us? Like, are we out of some type of either, like, contract? Like, are we, are we not following that by not bringing them up ourselves? Or is that the responsibility of the service provider to specifically state that they want to talk about rate increases?
There's no obligation for us to bring forward, you know, that would be something that would, would come from, from them, so, in terms of that condition. So.
And we haven't received any, like, letters in the past, other than the ones that we talked about in 2020 that you know of, that said, hey, we want to talk about rate increases?
We sincerely don't recall that, and it seems like if there, if there was an ask for that specific purpose, that they, they would have continued forward if we had done that. But I will be happy to go back and see if there was. It is true, Ms. Lewis is correct, that we have met with them and talked with them. We meet every year to talk about, there is a report on the Republic Service Help Assist helps us with, in Marion County helps us with as well. It's a recycling report done from the state, so we work with them a lot of times for the criteria of meeting that and the standards that are met. There are requirements for that, that we do certain amount of information sharing out in the public, so we work and partner in terms of that. So we have had communications regarding those, those items and those materials, and there has been communication that since in the past. So, including with Mrs. Lewis's predecessor prior to that. And 16 was the last time. I know we had conversations about the China impact, but we can go back and look and see. We'll have to do that. But I'm looking here at Alyssa, and neither one has recalled anything prior to the COVID time when the ask was to come do a presentation, and we said because of the COVID rules. So once the communication era was cleaned up, that's when they were invited to come present in April.
I have a couple more questions, but again, if one of the counselors has more questions, my questions may already be answered by theirs.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay. I have a question for Republic Services. I'm just, I'm curious about why Woodburn and Almsville were left off of your guys' slide that you provided to us of all the cities, when they didn't, when they weren't asked for rate increases last year? I'll be honest, I am feeling a little bit misled by this data. So I'm just curious on how you guys selected these cities, because we did talk about Woodburn and Almsville, if I remember right. So I don't understand why, if that's how you selected the cities that you're presenting to us and that you're presenting to our residents as well. I don't understand why those ones were left off, then.
So we're not selectively picking cities. We picked ones that, if we missed one that you mentioned, apologize, it wasn't intentional. But I can tell you, Woodburn's increase since 2016 has been over 10%. We did that two years ago.
Cumulatively?
At least 10%, so perhaps more. So I can, I can take a look at that, but really, there's none that we're leaving off for any particular reason. We're glad to include as many as you want. I believe all of them will support a cumulative rate adjustment since 2016 that is in line with what the request is for here for Stateon.
Right. And I went back and I watched your main meeting, where we could only be part of the audience. And so I watched it in real time, and then I watched it again and took notes on everything that was mentioned specifically or called out as a question. And, you know, I accept responsibility. I directed, Will, and this is the information that the counselor is asking for for these specific cities. But, you know, Keith could call the staff of Almsville, the city manager, Ron, or, you know, could call our contact, and Woodburn is Jim Rowell, and he could talk about our presentations this year.
Right. So I feel like staff time has already kind of been expended on holding these meetings and preparing for them, and, you know, that's tax dollars that are being spent. So I don't, I don't know that I, as a counselor, would want to direct our staff to then call another city to get that information. I was hoping that information was brought here to us. I also have not heard the question number three that we had asked, which is the impacts the residents will see on their invoices from Republic Services as a result of the proposed increase. Like, what is this direct amount? If you have this size of a garbage can, what is that going to be? I think that our residents deserve to know without having to say, well, it's 10% above what it is now. We've already heard public comments stating that it's hard to find those rates for them. So I'd really like that to be shared of what this rate increase would be to their pocketbooks.
With respect, it was the last slide that I presented, and hopefully was shared with you by Alyssa in our presentation. It was also a slide in our April presentation. And generally, I can only speak for other cities, but when there is a rate adjustment, other cities post that as part of the public record to their website. And I imagine, you know, you have great staff, so I'm sure they would, they do the same. And I can bring it back up, if you want to look at it. Or have Travis bring it back up?
Yeah, that would be great, because I did not see that. It could have been that it was too far away for me to see.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Travis, can you bring up that last, just the last one?
And while you're doing that, Travis, the rate adjustment in Woodburn a couple years ago was 12%.
That was in 2019, right? In the fall, as I recall.
2019 went into effect January 1st of 2020.
Correct. Can you pull up, wait, we talked about Almsville's from last year? In your presentation, you're part of the presentation, correct?
Yep.
Are you able to see that now, or is it not big enough?
Yeah, so it's showing that for residential, for 20-gallon, the, at the 10.3%, that would be $2.40 added. Is that to the, like, bimonthly bill, or is that per month?
That would be per month add, so bimonthly, it would be $4.80 increase.
And is the most common size in Stateon, like our other cities as well, is it the 35-gallon, or is it 65-gallon for garbage?
Usually, it's 65-gallon, although the percentages are pretty close between 35 and 65-gallon carts.
Thanks. Thanks.
I think you're going to find 65 to 70% of your, your residents are in one of those two sizes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, and then the 35 gallon, and also for residents that are wanting to know, the change per month would be $2.82 increase in your bill, and then 65 gallon garbage would be $3.84 increase per month in your bill, and then 90, the 90 gallon would be $4.31. So if you do have a 90 gallon, for example, just so that we're clear, in your, the billing happens once every two months, so your increase for that 90 gallons would be $8.62 increase.
If you are a residential customer. Correct.
So I just have one other point of clarification that I'm needing. They said that they're asking for a level set adjustment of 10%. It was like 10 point something percent. Does that mean 10.3% every, is that every year, then, you're going to be asking for that? I don't, that's what I'm, I'm not understanding.
No, this is just one time. This is just what we would need to get to the 10%. So next year, you know, or any request going forward would also be based on what it would take to get to a 10%. When we say level set, that's kind of what we're referring to. But, but if you do these adjustments annually, like these other, other cities that have approved smaller increases, well, they're, they're approving, their increases are over 10%. They just did it each year. They kind of did, had it broken up. So, you know, what we would need in future years, I guess if you have similar inflationary, inflationary costs or that type of thing, would maybe be, and this is just, you know, a guess based on what past years have been, would maybe be something in the 2% to 3% range, so.
And there's a few ways, I hope, that we've demonstrated to get, to get to that target of 10%. Other cities, some of them do a straight tie to Consumer Price Index. There's two that align with our industry, one Garbage Trash and one called Water Sword Trash. And that's published by the Bureau of Labor and Industries, monthly and annually. You can, you can find it on the federal website. Some cities do what we'll refer to as a blended CPI, in which different, you know, the staff or the council decided to, okay, we're going to have this percentage, it's going to be CPI, this percentage is going to be tied to fuel costs, which can vary widely, this percentage is going to be tied to, you know, replacement. But I, you know, they divide it up in a way that made sense to them. And some cities, like Grants Pass, the same system as State, in which Republic Services had to go to them and to ask, request to get back to the eight to 12%. And get back into the range to the 10% target, eight to 12 was the target of 10. But actually, I know that my colleague that was working in Grants Pass with my, she has a similar title to me. Grants Pass had wanted to do, for whatever reason, 9 to 13% with a target of 11. However, they had to give their residents a 15% rate increase within the past couple of months, and then they said, no, we don't want to do this in five years again, so let's just go straight, you know, let's do a Consumer Price Index, then we know what to expect every year. And so my colleague, who has Grants Pass as part of her territory, is working with city staff to, you know, convert that, and to, in her annual report, she can lay out, here's what the Bureau of Labor and Industries published, and this is the adjustment. Or if she's over 12% or 13%, or whatever they agreed on, then there's, there's no adjustment at all. Does that make sense? There's a lot of numbers and can be a little confusing, but I hope, I hope I was able to explain it well.
On on, here it is, another way out one. By this negotiation, it kind of takes all the work, or kind of, the automatic increases kind of take all the work out of it for you folks, Don, doesn't it? You just have to sit back and wait for it's the anniversary.
Actually, a lot of work goes into creating an annual report, which is presented to staff every year, and, and your staff receives. And, and, you know, that's what we'd like to report on every year, also. So in, in the annual report, you can see the 8 to 12% is brought up. Also, and if I may address your, your out, your off the question from before, one of my, somebody who's observing reminded me that there was a contract that we walked away from, and that was, we, are you familiar with the Metro Regional Government? In the Portland area?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will, so Metro Regional Government controls the flow of trash in Monmouth, Washington, and Clackens Counties, and they own two transfer stations, which they contracted out to the private sector. And we had one of those contracts, but it was not, we couldn't come to an agreement. And now it is, that transfer station is managed by another private sector company on Metro's behalf.
But don't you think, don't you think we ought to have a good fight about these rate increases every year?
I would love to come every year to discuss it with you, Mayor.
Get down in the mud and.
Yeah, sure.
Our, our ratepayers would enjoy it. We're fighting for them.
Yeah.
And you folks would have to continually justify these rate increases. I don't know, just, just a thought.
That is also true, and we do like to come before our cities and remind you that we're at your curb at least twice a week, providing an essential service and dog biscuits.
Yeah, Gus loves you, but his, his English is limited, and so I have to speak for him, or try to.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Somebody else, anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Are we done? No, go ahead, please.
Yes, I'm so sorry. I knew I was going to have a lot of questions for this. Keith, I'm, I keep hearing about like these, that they want to be on there every year, and they just like would like to come. Is that something that we normally do for a service provider, where they don't have to actually make the request, that it's then on our staff's response, it's then our staff's responsibility to remember to put this on? Because I, I don't, I'm not familiar with that, and I haven't heard of us doing that, so.
We don't have anyone currently that has a standing request. And, and so, you know, it's like this time when the request came, you know, COVID definitely made things different, and then once we realized the request included an ask, we, we got it on the agenda. So we're happy to work when, when entities come, but we also don't want entities to come if they don't have anything necessarily to share, or something that the council at that point really wants to be engaged or involved in. I mean, sometimes with the, like with many different agencies, they provide their annual report, and the annual report would, would be, you know, provided, information's there. If there's questions, you know, we can always, the council can always ask them to come clarify, you know, what's going on and what's being asked, too. So it can definitely work both ways, depending on what the council wants, but currently we don't have anybody who has a standing agenda item on there. And I, in my time in city management, I am not aware of any, any entity ever having that.
Thank you. That, that's what I was thinking, that it, that it was, it would make sense that someone would request on their own and remember to ask for a rate adjustment conversation as they needed it, and be clear about what they were asking for.
For clarification, if I may, is it the council's preference that we not appear before council to talk about any legislation or the annual report? Should we not need a rate adjustment? It's, counselor, you prefer us to only come if we are asking for an adjustment?
Um, no, I think that it's great if you guys want to come and share things with the council. I'm, I'm always willing to hear what you guys have to say, and, and what's going on over in, in your world, and what you're doing for, for our residents. I think that's great. I found your guys's last presentation very educational and interesting, and I just think that if you're going to want to talk about rates, that should be very clear, and it should be put, it should be requested specifically annually, because I'm still just baffled at the fact that we haven't been asked specifically. It doesn't sound like, unless you guys can have one of your colleagues look that up as well, as you did for the mayor's question. I'm still not hearing that you guys asked specifically for anything in 2017, 18, or 19, and 2020 was a pandemic. So I'm a little defensive of our, our city right now, and I, I'm sure that that is coming across, because I know they do great work. And I, I'm feeling a little bit like this is, you're trying to pass the buck a little bit over to our city staff, that this is kind of their fault, and, and I just don't, I'm not seeing that.
No, that's not at all our intent. We have, we have made, we can provide some information on that, so we're glad to get back to on that. But Counselor Hook, a lot of cities that we work with, they have a preference for us not to come in and ask every year. And so, and I don't know if that's been the history of this council, but we're also kind of respectful to that, that some, some cities just don't want us to come in and ask every year. So, you know, that may mean that we're in every couple of years. But just to be clear, our intent is not to, not to place any, any faults. I mean, the request would have been the same, whether it, whether it was, you know, 1.7% each year for the last six years, or 10%, 10.3% now. That, I mean, it's just a matter of preference, and if the preference is that we are in every year, and then we're gladly do that and ask for the, you know, the 1.7, or whatever it is, each, whatever the math comes out to be each year.
I just, you had said that a lot of cities don't ask for that. Maybe I'm not reading this rate adjustment history slide correctly, but all of the cities and, and counties that you listed on there did have a rate increase every single year that you listed. So I'm just really conflicted and confused as, as to what you're trying to say.
Cities do have a preference that it be every year, and it does so happen that each one of those listed, they, those cities have elected to go to some sort of index or blended CPI, so that's the reason you see it in there every year, for, for them, because they've now tied themselves to, they've chosen to tie themselves to an index, honestly, to avoid, I think, you know, tougher conversations like this. Some cities want to, want to have these conversations, and, and that's the choice of the city, and we're, we're here either way, you know, making, presenting our, our request. But there are some cities that, that we brought up that weren't annual. Grants Pass is one. That one, if you go back and look at the rate adjustment history, was not an annual increase, but they did have a large increase to, to level set, and now they have chosen to go to an index to avoid the up and down and unpredictability of, of the increases. I didn't have it on the slide, but Walton's another one, when they've had three increases in the last six years, so not every year, but every other year. So that's just a choice oftentimes of the city's preference, because some cities, they, like I said, they prefer for us not to be in every year. They prefer maybe an every other year approach. And so each city is unique in that way.
Mr. Mayor, I have one final question.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the really tough, awkward question. If we do not approve this 10.3%, are we at risk of losing you guys as a service provider?
No. Go ahead, Will, please.
Yeah, of course. I mean, our, our, our hope is that we, we, we want to provide great service. We love the partnership and the presence that we have with, with State and in State. And, you know, we're, we're not based on where we're at, like right now, this is not a situation where we're like, man, this just isn't working for us. There are situations sometimes that do get that bad, but that's not, that's not how we feel about State. We really like to just operate in good faith and, and sort of figure out what makes sense for the city. If you have a preference for us to come in every year, which is kind of what I'm hearing from you, Counselor Hook, I mean, we're glad to do that. We want to be transparent, we want to take care of the city, and we want to maintain and build the relationship that we have. It's important to us, truly.
Anything else? Counselors? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing then. And counsel deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Issue this evening.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just having a really hard time understanding how we're supposed to during a pandemic that we are just coming out of, where many of our residents lost jobs, had to close businesses. I mean, the financial impacts are huge. How we can ask them to have their bill increased by 10.3% right now? It just seems excessive, and from what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, we could get documents that show, yes, they specifically asked for a rate increase every, every year, and we just somehow dropped the ball. And if that's the case, we should definitely own that, and we should do better, and we should come back and talk about this again, to make sure that we are working with our service providers in a collaborative way, and making sure they're taken care of, and our residents are taken care of. But I'm just not seeing that that was done. For me, if they did not ask for an annual specific rate increase conversation since the 2016 one, other than the one during the pandemic, which was already explained, this just seems like it was poor planning on their part. I don't believe that our residents should have to feel those impacts at a time like this because of that possible poor planning. So I would like to see us possibly, you know, still, still give them a rate increase, but maybe let's go middle of this slide, where there was almost like 5.7% in 2019 down the line that other cities did. You know, get us some type of rate increase, come back again next year, talk about where they're at, where we're at, where our economy in our, in our town is at. A few dollars is huge to a lot of people in our town. You know, you look at our median household income of, of our city, and these dollars matter, and everyone else is also giving, you know, percentage increases to their services as well. So that's just where I'm at with it. Of course, I'm only one voice on the council.
Okay. Someone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I, I asked the question of, you know, obviously, they had that range, and I asked about the eight to 12%. And so, you know, they were talking about where, obviously, they would like to be with that, but 8% is still within their, their range. So do you want to have a discussion about, so he said that a rate increase of this year at 6.5% would get them to that 8%. Obviously, it's not exactly where they want to be, but it, it increases, you know, it, it gives that increase and puts them where they want to be, and it's not as big of a blow. And then we could, we could split it up. We could do the 6.5% this year, then we could do, and, and say we can do another one in 2021 to kind of get us there, but then it won't be such a big increase at one time. Because my thought is, you know, something similar to what you said, Counselor Hook, is that like, it's, it's only $2 here, but it's also like, our water rates went up, and you're looking, I'm looking at my gas bill, and even though I use less gas this year, I'm paying more than last year. And so it's just these little things, we're paying more for gas, like, it's the little things that are just building and building. And, and so I'm looking at it as a big picture type of situation.
Counselor, I, I think that it is great, it is exactly the time to have that conversation, right? I, I do, that's why I like the council deliberation portion, because I get to hear everyone else's thoughts, and I appreciate all the things that you're saying, and, and that you want to work to try to get to their at least 8%. I'm still struggling to understand where, where we're required to get them to their acceptable profitability range. I still have not yet seen where, where that. I still have not yet seen where, where that really even comes from. They talk about like the, the price index and things like that, but I don't know that that, that that's our responsibility to get them there this year when it seems like they just didn't plan the way that maybe they should have for these incremental rate increases over time. So, I mean, if that's where you guys end up leaning, that you would like to go to that 6.5, you said, I, I-
That would be the increase.
Yeah, the increase, yeah, the increase, instead of like a 5.7 that I had thrown out there. I'm, I think we should talk about it, sure, yeah.
So my thought is, I understand what you're saying, possibly poor planning or miscommunication. However, I don't want us to get to a point where it's a significant amount, because we seem to be having those hard conversations where things are coming to the council, and it's like, well, if we would have done this incrementally a little bit over time, we would be in a better situation. But now the ask is bigger, and it's a more daunting conversation to have. So I don't want to, I'm trying to think of a balance between those, those two options.
Yeah, I feel like maybe we should have, you know, it's been, what, six year, or six years since they were here before. Why, why wouldn't we be able to have a more balanced rate increase over six years versus jumping right to something that gets them to their 8% right now? I don't know, I just don't feel like that should be put on the backs of our residents' pocketbooks, especially this year, coming out of a pandemic, is really where I'm at.
Folks, here's a, here's a counterpoint comment, that if, if it, if we had granted normal rate increases, incremental ones, in 17, 18, or 19, we might be at this level already, and maybe even more so. So we, we maybe have benefited from a lack of, of those rate increase requests over the last four or five years. 20, we have to discount because nothing happened the way it was supposed to then.
Yeah, that was, that was going to be a point of mine also, I think, even if it was poor planning on that, on their part, that did end up saving our residents money, because they haven't had a rate increase until, till now. I was going to propose a sort of a compromise solution that of, I just did a quick calculation of 75% of their requests, which would be 7.7%, through the end of 2022, and then I like the idea of doing an indexed increase after that, a CPI indexed increase. I like his, I like smoothing out the increases after that, and not, I like, I don't want to have this fight every couple of years. I want it to be smaller and more predictable, simpler, and I think that's a good idea, and I think the residents would appreciate that, too, to not have a, you know, big jumps and rather, rather small steps every few years. So that would be my proposal, would be to do, do 7.7% now through the end of 2022, and then act, active January 1st, 2023, a indexed increase after that, CPI increased, CPI indexed, sorry.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Keith, a question for you. So we're talking about the CPI index, would that be similar to, Keith, they talked about the super water one, so is that similar to one that we use, or?
I honestly don't know. We use CPI West, if I remember right. There's been some CPI changes. I'm not sure for construction, we use construction, yeah, the construction index. So I'm not familiar, just not something I've looked at or seen of what the, what that, what that index looks like, or what the history of that, or what it's tied to specifically. I'm sure Republic Services could provide that, or we could look it up and see what, what it, what it's tied to. But if, if the council wanted to go to some sort of CPI type, type thing, whatever that is, you know, whether it's, it's to CPIW, whether it's to, you know, something that's closer aligned with one of those others, you know, we can take a look at that and then make recommendations, or just talk about what the differences are and how those indexes are determined, and how the costs are there, and what fits best. I think when we look at what we try to do for CPI, we're trying to find something that we can say closely aligns with our community. And that, that's, that's the challenge that we can face sometimes, but that's what we think is important. We don't want to necessarily have inflation in the East Coast or something like that influence us. We want something that's more closely tied to what's happening more in our neighborhood as close as we can. So I think trying to find something that would, that would fit that, if that was the goal of the council, that would be what we would try to do. We could bring forward all of those, those suggestions, just to kind of look at what that would mean.
And then a follow-up to that, Mr. Mayor. So Keith, can you remind me, so even though we have a CPI increase every year for our water, we still, as a council, it still gets brought back to us every year for us to approve, right?
Yeah, there's a policy that says that, the policy is that it's increased in there, but when we go through the budget process, we talk about this includes the CPI that council had previously approved, and then as it goes through the budget approval, we talk about, you know, this is a CPI that was previously approved. So even though there's a policy in place, we're following that policy. At any time, you as policymakers can change what that policy is. So we probably want to have a discussion on, on changing out of that. But a few years ago, we did switch our utility rates for our utility bill, our entire utility bill, to a CPI index, and the same thing with our SDCs, tying that one to construction index. You know, to just basically try to say, we're setting our rates, and then going forward, this should keep us in, in line with inflationary, to try to avoid the same type of situation other cities have faced with water rates, you know, where our local communities had a 20% increase in water rates or something not too long ago, just, just to avoid that kind of situation. So, but again, it would be just looking at what we would want to do, if that's what the council want to do. But you're correct, when those policies comes forward, you know, we mentioned that every time during those cycles, because that's what we want, you know, reminder of why we're doing this, and at any time, you can change that.
And we could make it so that that, even if it's, if we say we want to do that, it's, would still come before council to approve it?
Well, the, one thing I'd want to, I would want to talk to the city attorney on, it's just, you know, what, since this is a franchise agreement, as part of a franchise, you know, that might be something that's a little more binding.
Okay.
And so I'm not sure on that, I'm not an attorney, but that would be the one question I would have, is just to make sure we would talk to the city attorney about how we want to do that from a policy point of view.
Keith, I have a question on the fiscal impact portion of our, of the memorandum. It talks about the City of Staten is declared to be a 5% for the franchise's gross receipts for the, from the franchise service provider, and then basically if, if we, sorry, if we do, I didn't read all of the stuff that I wanted to. Basically, if it's adopted the 10.3%, that, is that saying that you guys would not be putting an extra 5% on there, or what happens if we don't adopt the 10.3%? Like, then will we be getting to 10.3% anyway?
No, I mean, ultimately, ultimately, what we get from the franchisee is, is, you know, what revenues are tied to that, that index. We get 5%, you know, the franchise agreement says 5%. So what we were trying to say in that is, we budget every year in our budget what it is, and if I remember right, the number is $89,000 is what we said. Okay, good. And so what we were basically saying is, with this increase, if it was approved, we wouldn't make any necessarily budget adjustments. Now, I would anticipate then we would see more coming to us, but it wouldn't be enough amount of money, and this was something Suzanne and I had talked about, that we would make any real adjustments. So we were talking about fiscal impact from our point of view of the franchise agreement. We wouldn't make any real needed adjustments or necessary adjustments, this wouldn't have any real fiscal impact, other than, you know, we might be a little conservative on that number, especially if that 10.3 was, was put into place.
Okay, thanks. So I feel like, I appreciate both things that the counselors threw out for percentages. I ran for office and was elected to, you know, fight for the best interests of not only our city, but the residents that are in it. And for me, I just can't get over the fact that it's really seeming like, you know, someone goes through six years of school and doesn't turn in their assignments, and then at the end, they want us to make up for all that and accept the assignments anyway, so they can like graduate. And I, I know maybe that's a little harsh to say, I don't think anyone is shocked by that coming for me, and I really am uncomfortable putting all of this on the backs of our residents, even at both rates that you guys threw out. And I, I really love the compassion that, that both counselors have had to try and work with this very important partner in our community, which is why I wanted to ask the hard question of if we were at risk of losing the service provider, because I definitely don't want that. I just don't think this year is the right year to be putting that 7.5, I think, or seven something, and 6.5 that, that you threw out. I just think we can have this conversation again and do smaller incremental things over the next six years, just like we just went through six years of, of not having anything, but let's, let's slowly get to where they need to be over the six years, since they didn't really come and ask us for a rate increase over all that time. I don't think that implementing that onto the bills of our residents is, is really fair.
Mr. Porter, can I have all my assignments so I can graduate?
Right, you're a teacher, you understand this, right?
Absolutely.
And there's, I mean, I understand having compassion, so I, I'm willing to talk about like, where maybe we should be at for a rate. I, I don't know that it should be, the goal should be getting them to their 8% of, of whatever it is that they deem to be acceptable profitability range.
Just, just for the heck of it, not to, not to push at all, but I wrote up a motion reflecting of Council McDonald's thought, a 7.7 increase until the end of 22, then, 2022, then an index percent from then on. I just scratched that out after listening to his proposal, but that's just one, one possibility.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I want to throw out there that mine is, is between those two's at the 6.5% increase, which would still be in line with, with their range, and I know, and Councilor Hook, how you feel about that, but that's my compromise. Not, I mean, I don't even want to see, I want to say no, too, but again, I just, I'm thinking about this whole idea of kicking the can down the road type of situation, and that's like what we face and what we have faced the last three years in different situations, is where it's like, well, this wasn't taken care of previously, so now you have to be the one to do it. And so that's just my, my two cents on that.
Yeah, I definitely see what you mean, because we've definitely had to deal with a lot of things of, a lot of cans that have been kicked down the road.
Garbage cans.
Yeah, there we go. I, I don't know, I'd have to hear the motion to know if I'm going to, if I'd be able to vote for it or not, I think, and I'm, the only motion that I would be willing to make is at the rate that I stated already, and I don't think that anyone is really going to entertain that anyway, so.
Wait, what was yours, the five?
5.7.
Oh, that was your, in the middle?
Yep, that middle 2019.
Would you folks be more comfortable with, with waiting till the other two members are here and to have a, a final?
Yeah, I was going to ask if, if, since we're not all likely to agree, and do we need just a majority of the people that are here for the motion to pass?
We have a quorum, so you, you guys could definitely make that decision.
And, and can, can we keep public comment for this, even like, can we reopen public comment until we meet next? That's another thing I was wondering, is, you know, a lot of people didn't really realize that this was a topic, even though it has been talked about at multiple council meetings, and I, I get that, we've done all the notifications that we're supposed to, and it's, it's not really that. I think people just have a lot going on in their, in their lives right now, given, you know, we're shifting back to post-pandemic life. And so I just don't think that this kind of stuff is on their radar, but I, I mean, you look at the public comment that we just, what, got in today, all three of these were today, and they were all, yeah, they were all today. So I, I can imagine that maybe there might be more, more discussions on, on that and what the impacts of the bill would be. I'm not saying that we have to keep it open, or that I'm really like, super advocating, but I just-
I think, I think the answer is, I mean, what you would basically be doing at this point, if you wanted to move forward with that discussion, is to make a motion of what you would like the resolution to be, and that would come forward to the city council at an upcoming council meeting, where then that rate would be discussed and voted on, right? So, you know, basically, what you're asking us tonight, if you wanted to move that way, would be to create a resolution with whatever amount you agree to, or whatever, you know, things you want. Work with the city attorney on getting that done, we'll work with Republic Services so they can be there, and then, and then go, go forward to the future council meeting.
Yeah.
Keith, the only thing that I see with that point is that we all have a different idea of what that rate should be, we have like three different ones.
But getting Counselor Mullin and Counselor Patty's input, I mean, we may have a much easier conversation, because it could be that, you know, those two completely agree with you, or completely agree with you.
Or completely agree with you.
I mean, maybe, but, come on.
It could happen.
Am I hearing you'd want to have another, folks who want to have another public hearing on this?
I, I would really-
Redo this another, the next meeting?
I really want to know about the, the-
I, I, I would like to entertain the idea of having the other counselors here, because, because we don't have, we all have different ideas of it. If it was like that there were two of us that agreed, then I would say, okay, let's do it, but, oh, sorry.
I think I would have a big shift in my, my thoughts if I, if I had the data in front of me saying that, yes, they did request every year, or even four of the six years specifically for a rate increase conversation. But I've just not seen that now, and maybe if we had more time, then Republic Services could furnish that. I don't want to ask our staff to look that up, unless, unless they're going, unless Republican Services says, we don't have that data in our system, we're going to request a public records request anyway, and then we do the, the work anyway, then that wouldn't make any sense. But if they have that, that information already, that they could find on their own.
We'll be happy to look. I, I, I mean, I have no issues with looking at what past history is. I mean, I think that's just, that's just good for us to, to check ourselves, too. So, yeah, there's been something said, so we, we should go back and see what the record actually says, and, and whatever it is, that's what we're going to have to, to address. So, happy to do that, that's not really a problem.
Well, what shall we do, folks, if anything? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this discussion until next meeting.
Okay, all right.
Pending the information that we're talking about.
Yes.
So I have a motion, is there a second, please?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second to table the discussion on Republic Services' request for a rate increase until next meeting, which would be August?
Third.
Second.
Second.
Is that our summer meeting that we, we bag?
Um, no, we don't, the next one, I mean, we generally do the Fourth of July, and then sometimes we do the first meeting in September with the, with the holiday. I mean, the, the, the challenge, I mean, the challenge in many communities to take the summer off, and that's not what our, our charter says, but the challenge always in the summertime is, this is a difficult time, you know, people on vacations, people aren't here, you know, in terms of reaching the community, too, but-
So can we, can we resume these?
But I, I think, we can, we can definitely bring this back to the next, next meeting. If you guys wanted to as well, and there's a motion, but you could always just say, do a resolution, so you have something ready to discuss, if you'd like to, to do that. So, but again, completely up to the council.
Motion says table until the next meeting, so that's what we'll, with a vote, would you poll the council, please?
What? Discussion, yeah. So I think it's important that we keep, or that we, that we have them do a resolution so there is more complete information for the other counselors to see like, what we kind of came up with in this meeting so far, so that we're not just starting from a blank slate of, of what we already had. So I would, I would personally like to see that added maybe to the motion, and then, I mean, what, what happens if those two counselors are missing again at that meeting? It's summertime, so I know I'm available that day, so I'll be here for the discussion, but I'm not sure about, about them, so I don't want us to be stuck in the exact same situation. So it might be nice to maybe send an email maybe out to the council and be like, are you even available on that date?
I'd like to, do I need to rescind my motion, or make it?
Yeah, I think you can resc- Yeah, I think you can rescind it and then restate it.
Okay. Or can I just restate it? And then he has to second it?
Yeah.
I think you rescind.
I'd like, okay, I'd like to rescind my motion to table the conversation.
Okay.
Would you be willing to rescind your second?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're clear?
Then I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare a resolution for a solid waste rate increase of 6.5% for the year 2021, and in the year 2023, tie any increases to, I mean, just say CPI?
Yeah, CPI rate.
CPI rate yearly. To be, what does that want, what do I want to say? To be approved yearly by the council.
I won't be able to repeat that, but the spirit is fine, no, I'm good with it. Just a thought, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is seconded. Just a thought, should we put in that resolution, or maybe three resolutions, the 6.6, whatever your number?
That's 6.5.
6.5, okay, how about a 7, 7, and an 8? Just put all three of them in there and?
The council would be able to change the resolution if they wanted to. Yeah, so if the council decided they wanted to raise it or change it, I think they could.
Okay, let's just go with the one.
And I just want to make sure that like that motion also includes like tabling it until the next meeting, that that's like understood as well? It's kind of like implied, maybe? Or do we need to be that specific?
I think what your motion is, the decision tonight is just to move forward with the next council meeting, August 3rd. The only caveat is I will want to work with the city attorney on this, so I'm just making sure, we'll try to get that moving just with the timeframe, but if there's any delays, I'll let you know, and I'll let Republic Services know, and then we'll move it on to the second meeting in August. But we will aim sincerely for the next one, but essentially, the decision tonight is just to have this discussion at the next one with this resolution to be considered.
And then, oh my gosh, I just lost it. I'm sorry.
Can the city attorney be here for that? Like, it doesn't seem like we ever really see our city attorney.
Oh.
This seems like a good topic or something like that.
We can definitely see if they can be there, or potentially you can be on Zoom.
Zoom and then, yeah.
Yeah, because that would be nice, I think.
I got it. So if it doesn't make sense, or like the city attorney says, eh, that, you know, putting the CPI language in there, then that, I mean, we can say like, okay, we're not going to have, we can tell Republic Services, we're not interested in having a conversation about rate increases until 2023, right? I mean, not, it doesn't have to be in the motion, but it can just be, I don't mean that to be rude, I just mean like.
I think technically we could do anything that we really wanted to do in that, so we could scrap it all, or we could change everything at that next meeting if we wanted to.
You can also get a sense that they were a little desperate, that they hadn't had a rate increase for five years, and that there was a certain amount of push there.
I feel like anything that I have to say would not probably benefit the relationship, so.
Desperate, I mean, they were out there in the city that they serve.
Right, exactly. I don't want us to damage the important relationship that we have with them, but I.
No, I think we have a lot of questions.
Yes.
We're very full of them.
We did have a lot.
Alyssa, you were writing frantically over there, could you restate that motion for discussion here? We'll get to a vote here pretty quick.
This is like a test, okay. Here's what I wrote down, I think I caught it all. Direct staff to prepare a resolution for a 6.5% increase for 2021, and in 2023, tie increases to the annual CPI rate, to be approved annually by the city council.
Is that?
Yeah.
She's got it.
Perfect.
Under discussion, go ahead, folks. Anything?
I'm good with that for now.
I'm good with that for now, too.
I'm good.
Shall we go to a vote on it, then?
Sure.
Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Councilor Ort?
Yes.
Councilor Hook?
Yes, with an explanation that I am not voting for the 6.5%. I am voting for moving it to when more councilors can be involved.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes three to zero.
All right. All right, we've taken quite a bit of the time this evening, but that's what we needed to do, so under general business this evening, rescinding of temporary COVID-19 public meeting procedures and consideration of Resolution Number 1027, adopting rules of the state and city council. And let's see what we do with this. Okay, and this is a staff report, City Hall. That's Alyssa, go ahead, please, dear.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am going to stay on this spot just because I'm juggling all these computers and our live stream, but I wanted to bring before you tonight, as you know, the governor has lifted the guidelines for COVID-19, which means that we can rescind our temporary COVID-19 public meeting procedures, and so that's one piece of the staff report. The other piece is, I'm sorry, somebody has muted me, so I'm not sure what's going on on Zoom, so I just need to make sure that I'm unmuted, I don't know what happened. Okay, sorry about that. Everyone in Zoom land wouldn't be able to hear me if I'm muted. So the second part is, there is taking some of the temporary rules that we had put into place for virtual public comment, written comment, and also just the way that we're holding these hybrid meetings, to incorporate them into our permanent council rules. And so what I did was take the exact language that we had in the temporary rules for in-person verbal, virtual comment and written comment, and incorporated those into the rules under public comment and public hearing testimony. We also made some edits to the attendance of council, that if it was necessary, the council could appear virtually by letting us know ahead of time. That is essentially a summary of what the changes were, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
So thank you for doing that, first off, because I think that this hybrid model is really awesome. It helps with residents at home being able to watch still, because before, for any residents that are watching, that never watched council meetings before this, or before the pandemic, these were not live on YouTube. It took processing time, and then it was uploaded like the next day or so, and so right now, we're increasing that accessibility, because if you're at home and you're hearing something that we're talking about, you could, if you have the access to, get in your car, come down here and do some public comment at the end of the meeting, because we have all advocated to have a lot of public comment in our meetings so that voices are heard. So I appreciate that you put all of this stuff in there, because I just think the idea of this hybrid model, of being able to testify via Zoom, which a lot of people are now come more comfortable with Zoom, also be able to be in person, or do something in writing, and still be able to put that all in the same day, is really awesome. And then even for councilors like I myself, I'm a single mom, I have children, there are some times that these council meetings are going to fall when I have my kids, and I really don't think you guys want them running around here, as wonderfully behaved as they are, having that option to be able to appear as needed with notice from home is great for the equity piece of that. So thank you for that. I don't really have a question other than, do you know how awesome you guys are?
Thank you, and I think it was, it's important to point out that, you know, as we were kind of pushed into this change going into the pandemic, we've really seen more participation, and we get more views. For instance, at the height of the meeting tonight, when we were in the public hearing, we had about 11 people watching live. We're down to seven now, but it's late. And so, you know, it's great to see that we're getting, reaching more people in the community, because it's so convenient just to be able to log on to YouTube and watch the meetings, and it's more transparency, it's removing barriers for the community, and we thought that it was important to try to keep that moving forward.
Yeah, and as a reminder, there were some meetings where we would have like no one in the audience when they were in person. When there was a really hot topic, it would flood with a lot of people, and I really like how you guys worked so hard to get this set up to where we could do hybrid, because I know that wasn't easy. You brought a lot of us councilors down one by one to talk about all the things that would have to happen to make this happen, and I really like having it expanded out so that there's a lot more space, because I remember we were really cramped when it was, you know, the hot topics that we were talking about. So I just appreciate the lessons learned that we've gotten, and how you guys were proactive to put those into these rules. Excellent, excellent work.
I will just say ditto to that, but also I, if one good thing could come out of the pandemic, it's the moving forward of like being able to do these like hybrid meetings, and we're seeing it in a lot of workplaces, or just the accessibility just opening up, and it's one of those things where we were just kind of pushed into it, and we had to do it, and obviously that's what needed to happen. So I'm thinking about, when we were talking about the next meeting, I'm like, okay, I'm going to be coming back from camping, but I could get on Zoom and still be here at the meeting and still do this, whereas, you know, before that wasn't a possibility, so. I love that it opens up the opportunity for the councilors to still be involved if they're able, if they're not able to come here in person, and then also just the accessibility for the community, because just like people learn differently, people want to have access to us differently, so that just opens up the options.
Yeah, and if you notice, like, there's not very many people in this room either, so I'm assuming that other city staff aren't spending as much time having to stick around in town. I don't know if we ever paid for that time before, but regardless whether we did or not, work-life balance is really important, so we're going to have happier staff not always having to show up, and I'm so sorry that you guys still have to show up, but.
That's completely fine.
I like that we're a lot closer to, like, maybe that's not an excuse, but still, like, I love that the staff or even, you know, Republic Services could come and be with us on Zoom, and again, I think that opens up accessibility to have people have So Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Where is it?
Thanks for covering for a minute there.
I want to make a motion to rescind the temporary COVID public meeting procedures. They're two separate things, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one, make a motion to rescind the temporary COVID-19 public meeting procedures.
I second.
Temporary meeting procedures? Okay. Do we not want to adopt this 1027?
Do we need to do that separately?
I have it just broke out separately, so we'll do this one first, and then we can do the next.
Okay, motion, is there a second, please?
Yeah, Councilor Hook seconds.
Okay, motion is seconded then, to extend the temporary COVID-19 meeting procedures. Is it?
I think it was rescind.
To rescind?
Yes.
I thought that was the topic, and that we were going to extend it, okay, rescind. Because there's some reasons to, you know, just the discussion I caught of convenience of some people being able to catch us.
We're keeping those, but it's going into the permanent rules.
Yeah, so we're just taking the temporary ones away, and we're adding them to the permanent.
We're good. Discussion.
We discussed.
Alyssa, poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Motion passes three to zero.
All right, got it. Yeah, I just missed too much of the discussion there. Oh, communications from city staff.
Oh, no, we have to do the next one, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, is there another one?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1027 as presented.
I second.
As presented, okay.
And so clarification, Mr. Mayor, so part of those temporary rules are being put into our regular, everyday rules, in terms of like the virtual.
Yeah. Oh, okay, good, I did catch that, all right.
Yes.
Okay, a motion to approve Resolution Number 1027 as presented. And there was a second?
Yes, Counselor Hook seconds.
And a second. Discussion. All right, Alyssa, again, poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yep.
Motion passes three to zero.
Okay, thank you. Communications from city staff. Mr. Campbell, anything this evening?
Yes, Chief Reesendall wasn't able to make it tonight, he is working, he had another obligation with work, so I'm going to try to step in and be the chief, and I'm just going to read here, so please bear with me. National Night Out is August 3rd, 2021, and is your neighborhood hosting an event or block party in honor of National Night Out? So the police department is asking for people to reach out, and they would love to drive by and to visit the event and to bring some swag. So National Night Out was designed for a nationwide program where communities come together in all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide on the first Tuesday in August. Neighborhoods host block parties, festivals, parades, cookouts, and various other community events with safety demonstrations, seminar, youth events, visits for emergency personnel, exhibits, and much more. So what the police department's really looking to do is to try to take National Night Out back to its roots, which is to get to know your neighbors, to have a neighborhood event, and then they would like to show up at those neighborhood events and to do that. So I have, I'm participating, I reached out to one of my neighbors who enjoys barbecuing like I do, and I think we're going to have a little competition and invite all of our neighbors to come do that. So we wanted to, this last meeting before, the next real opportunity to have this discussion is to invite people to get with their neighbors, get together, look to have these block parties, and then let us know, and so the police department can participate. But it's an event really designed to get to know your neighbors, and to get the police to come in and meet your neighbors in a friendly and neighborhood type thing. So I just wanted to speak on his behalf, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about that event.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
I remember, I think it was maybe 2018, 2019, we had neighborhood, National Night Out, like block parties in our parks. Was that something the city coordinated, or were those neighbors that coordinated that?
Those were city coordinated, so they're really trying to.
That was super cool.
I know what they're looking to do is to try to get the neighbors together at this point, and to have kind of those neighborhood block parties and do that.
Really cool, though. We had a ton at Quail Run Park, like, it was like packed, and all the kids were running around, and like the fire department sprayed the hoes out for them to run through, it was really awesome. So I really can't see, I mean, that's great, the block party, let's, can we, yes and?
You got to get your neighbors to go down to the park.
Yeah.
Rally them.
So many people are still like in the stuck inside mode, sometimes they need somebody else to plan it for them, and then they're like, fine, I'll go, because there's people there.
I think part of the idea is to make sure people are comfortable in doing an environment where people know their neighbors, so I think that's part of what the meaning behind, or why they're trying to move to this sort of thing.
We have some new neighbors that are eager to do something like this, so that'll, that'll work fine. We used to go over to Quail Run, we had a resident there. This is them. Not really possible this year, so this block party sounds good. That it came?
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Communications from Mayor and Council, I don't have anything else tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to let everyone know that I attended a webinar today with AOs, the Association of Oregon Counties and League of Oregon Cities, and it was about broadband internet, and it was quite informative. It sounds like there are more communities than just ours that have people that have a problem with accessing the internet. I think it was really beautiful and also a little bit heartbreaking to hear in our own public comment that, you know, until internet is free, basically, you know, some people, and the devices to use it are free, that that's going to be a barrier for some of our people to be involved in the stuff that's going on. So apparently there are some people, maybe at Marion County, that do the economic development Danielle, that might be able to like have some conversations with us about opportunities that there might be to decrease those barriers and maybe what some of our new numbers are for how many people aren't getting internet. I know that we have an internet service provider, so I'm not saying that we don't have broadband access, we do, but, you know, helping maybe combat some of those other barriers that are out there would be good. So I'm not like asking anyone to do anything right now, but I plan to reach out to Danielle and at least see if there's some type of help that they can give us in understanding what our community looks like, or at least connecting us with someone that might be able to do some type of assessment like that. Something that doesn't cost $100,000 for a study, something a lot cheaper like free.
A lack of, yeah, the fires last fall really pointed out that lack of internet access and just warning, an area-wide warning system, yeah.
Yeah, someone had mentioned that, you know, with telehealth right now, with, you know, a lot of people are missing out on that piece of being able to speak to their doctor from home because they don't have, they can't afford the internet, or they don't have the device that works to use the internet, like a smartphone or whatever, they don't know how to use the device that they have. And so I just thought that was like an interesting piece, because we also don't have public transportation really that's super reliable, and I'm hoping to have some conversations with one of the board members of the chariots transportation to see if there's something that we can do to increase services, not only for us, but like up the canyon as they're rebuilding and trying to revive. But until that happens, like, you never know how long that kind of stuff is going to happen, and usually those types of problems have to be fixed at multiple, with multiple angles, coming out at multiple angles. So I just, I just kind of wanted to bring that up only because it was, it was an interesting conversation, it was an interesting webinar. Apparently they recorded it, so like everyone can listen to it if they want to, but I don't want people to think that just because we have broadband internet, that that means everyone has access. And I would really love to see those numbers and see if we're still at that 20, I think it was 24 or 25% of our citizens or residents didn't have access to internet the last time. That was like the last census data, which was 10 years ago, so I don't know what it looks like now. It'd be interesting to know.
I'm going to see if Jana can hop on. I know this is something that the, you know, the library has dealt with, and this has been a challenge that schools have faced as well, you know, air cards and expanded services. So Jana, can you just talk briefly about some of the things the library is doing with this situation and kind of some of the challenges you're seeing or just thoughts you have?
Yeah, I would say our community is very fortunate to have companies like SUT dues and really helpful in connecting, making spots for both us and the school district to provide free Wi-Fi, and like you can get Wi-Fi like almost all the way out from the library to the reader board. And then other things that we're doing besides providing computers and stuff inside the library is because of our partnership with the National American Cooperative Regional Library Service, we actually have hotspots to check out, so people can check out a device that provides that internet access at home, which we were fortunate to get ready the week before the ice storm, which was very helpful as soon as T-Mobile's signal came back up. So this worked very well, and we connected a lot of people to resources from the parking lot. So the library certainly has a real desire to be helpful in that manner, too, Councilor Hook, and we're certainly watching that. And I had a conversation with a vendor today about what we're looking for and whether, because they're also, it's part of a big care deck brand, that we were able to do that at the regional library service level, and what, whether that's addressing our need of state, and hotspot wires are about where we, where I think we're going to need to be at currently, but that doesn't address like if the need grows or any of that. So it's definitely an issue that we're paying attention to.
Thank you. That wasn't like implying that...
No, no, no. This is more of an opportunity to sit on a smaller scale. Here's something that, you know, because Jana and I have had these conversations before, and this is an issue we've talked about too on a much smaller scale and kind of...
Yeah, I mean, the library, I think, probably saved a lot of families from, you know, or at least helped them survive getting through online schooling and stuff. I know that, just out of curiosity, I brought my kids down to the park one morning when they were in hybrid school, and we tried to do both of them on their Zoom, and like it just didn't work with the connection speed, and that's not anything against the library. I think it's just when you have a bunch of people using your Wi-Fi, and I think we weren't the only ones doing it, so we ended up packing up and going back home, but it was nice to happen.
We certainly had some parking lot schools happening, right? So...
Yeah, I definitely appreciate that.
I agree, you were not getting a soul signal paid.
Right, and I appreciate all the efforts that you guys have done to get us through that time that I'm hoping that we can...
And I think it's not a like pay, we did it and we're done, it's something that we need to still continue to address. And I would say it's not maybe just internet, but also access to printing, so...
Thank you so much for all the work you did, Jana.
Thank you.
Shall we go home? Let's do it. Good night, and thank you, folks. Good meeting.